All right, well, I think I'm ready, so let's get started.
If commissioners could turn on their cameras, thank you. Perfect.
Yeah, I want to see everybody's cats and kids and all of that kind of stuff. Although admittedly, in this format, you're all very small, so you can get by with a lot. Okay, I don't have a gavel here, so I'll just say, "Welcome, everyone. Good evening. This is the Sammamish Planning Commission, October 1st, 2020, meeting. Welcome back from a pause. It's great to have everybody back. Our last meeting was July, if you can remember that, so I'm glad to have everybody back to get started. We've got a couple of items on the agenda.
This conference will now be recorded.
And so, let's get started. Jackie, if you'd read the meeting accessibility?
Hi, everyone. This is Jackie. I'm here at City Hall with Kelly Hildy. For the meeting accessibility tonight pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual planning meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. There will be instructions on that as we get a little closer. To view the meeting the next day or later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website, or on the city YouTube channel, or on Comcast Channel 21 within Sammamish only. Thanks, Mark.
All right, let's start out with roll call. Let's try this. I'm going to read off each person's commissioner's name, and if you would just unmute and state that you're here, which is also a good opportunity to check your microphone. So, let's start out with Karthik Seetharaman. I guess I'm looking here, and I don't see Karthik. Okay, Mike Fresco.
I'm here.
Josh Amato.
Here.
Our vice chair, Retuja Indipure.
Yeah, good evening.
Larry Crandall.
Here.
And I am Mark Baughman, which I'm obviously here. As a reminder to everybody, I'll just mention this once, Mark Lewis had to step off the commission due to some work commitments. And so, we will be continuing on through the rest of the year with just the six of us, as Mark has stepped away. And I believe that the idea would be that we would add our seventh commissioner, fill that seventh position as part of kind of a normal process in January. One small note I'll mention about that is that for voting, when you have an even number, the way that the city council's rules read, and we follow the city council's rules, in any instance where we were to vote on a motion, and it's a tie, an even tie of three to three is considered passing or a yes vote. So, that's a small item, just to be aware of. Okay? Next, let's do approval of the agenda. Is there any objections to approving this evening's agenda?
No.
Okay, no objections. We'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next is approval of the minutes from the, if you can believe it, July 16th meeting. Does anyone have any comments? Does anyone remember the July 16th meeting? Anyone have any objections to approving the minutes? Hearing no objections, the minutes from the July 16th Planning Commission meeting are approved. Okay, next we have public comment on non-agenda items. So, Jackie, if you're going to read the public comment section?
Thanks, Mark. So, in order to provide verbal public comment, up to three minutes for non-agenda public comment, and seven minutes for agenda public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in, call the following number, and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. The access code is 699-839-229. Once you've joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator, myself, will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You will hear a voice, an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. Later this evening, we will have an opportunity to provide agenda public comment, and I will put up a similar slide on the screen, so that people can call in when that's time. It looks like we do have, oh, we have one caller for a non-agenda public comment, so I will go ahead and unmute you. You'll have three minutes to begin your comment. Please begin by stating your name and where you live, for the record. Go ahead and begin.
Good evening, this is, thank you. Good evening, this is Greg Gregory Bush here on behalf of AT&amp;T. I yield my time. I intended to dial in for an agenda item. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks very much, Gregory.
Okay, so, thanks. No more non-agenda public comment, then let's dive into the business of the evening. And we have two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is
muted.
Development regulation updates, and I believe we have a presentation on the work that's been done to get ready to study the second phase of our development regulation updates.
Yes, Chair Baughman, this is David Pyle, Community Development. Tonight, we have with us Sarah Astiri, who is one of our management analysts with the city, and we have Jeff Arango from Framework, who is serving as the consultant supporting the effort for the development regulations update Phase 2. They will be presenting to you tonight information on this topic, and we are looking forward to your feedback. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah and Jeff.
Thank you, David, and good evening, commissioners. I believe Jeff presented, have a presentation ready for tonight, so please, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, great. Let me just share my screen here. Get started. Okay, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. My name's Jeff Arango. I'm the Director of Planning at Framework. We're planning an urban design firm based in Seattle, and we'll be leading the consulting side of this effort. We also have on our team a firm called Code Studio, which is a firm based in Austin, Texas, that has a national-level practice focused exclusively on development codes, so they'll be providing some support for us and leading the work on Unified Development Code. So, we have a brief presentation with you to give tonight, and then we have a summary document that we sent out to you earlier, which we can also refer to, that's got much more detail on this initial effort to summarize all the work that the city had done previously regarding priorities for these Phase 2 updates to the development regulations. So, first, just a reminder that this effort is focused entirely on residential development. It does not involve the commercial areas or the town center. It includes all of the areas that are shown in yellow and orange on the map, which are the residential zones. Our scope of work has five major components. The first is project management, which deals with the kickoff meeting, which we had in August with city staff, regular staff meetings to provide updates on the project and track the progress. The second piece is, of course, the Phase 2 updates. Initially, we're doing a code audit and strategy, some of which will be presented tonight, and actually drafting the code and supporting graphics for the regulation updates. The third piece is a major effort to create a unified development code. So, right now, as I'm sure many of you know, the development regulations are scattered throughout the municipal code, making administration of that code difficult for staff, as well as those looking to do development, and the public as well, looking to access those code sections. That effort will be led by Code Studio, and that will include a best practices review upfront, so we can provide examples of codes that have been done that might provide some inspiration or a model for what we're looking to do here in Sammamish, and then a draft and final version of that unified development code, which we'll preview with the Planning Commission early on to get input and feedback on that process. And then, towards the end, we have a little bit of scope to develop the scoping documents for what we're calling the Phase 3 updates. There's a number of topics which we'll summarize later in the presentation, but some pretty major topics, such as design guidelines, housing affordability, and environmental sustainability, have currently been identified as potential priorities for that effort. And then, we do have finally some allocated time and budget for public engagement, which is a really important part of the process. We have a community advisory group, and we've had the first meeting with that group a couple of weeks ago. We have four meetings scheduled with them, and we did some stakeholder interviews upfront, which will present some early findings on that. We'll be producing some communication materials that can be used on the city's website and Connect Sammamish. We have a series of meetings with the Planning Commission and City Council in a variety of formats, and we'll be having a joint meeting next week. And then, we do have also in there a public engagement event that we'll be having sometime later in the project, to be able to educate people about what's involved and how they can provide input. And then, we also have an online survey that we're hoping to launch in a couple of weeks, and expect that to run for about 30 days. The overall project schedule, again, we kicked off in late or mid-August. We're expecting the project to run through the end of September 2021, so about a year in length. Initially, we had expected the Phase 2 development regulations to be completed in March. We are reworking the schedule a little bit. Due to the number of meetings that we have, and the need to get materials out in advance of the meeting, we are adjusting that schedule. Plus, we want to maintain some measure of flexibility. If there's issues that come up along the way, or code sections that need to be redrafted, we want to be able to make sure we have adequate time to respond to that. We anticipate the Unified Development Code work starting right at the 1st of January in 2021, and continuing through September of 2021. So, the community advisory group, as I mentioned, has been assembled by the city. It's a great group, representing a broad section of stakeholders. They're really there to serve an advisory capacity. They can review and provide input to us both early in the process and as we start to refine the actual code updates. We did have them participate in one-on-one interviews, which were very informative. And bullet number four is, you know, this group, again, is more designed to be a sounding board. They're not going to vote or make formal recommendations on the code updates. So, this next section deals with different types of residential projects that we'll be addressing, and these have been identified by staff in the scoping process. But the first is infill development on existing lots, and some of these are older flats in areas with high concentration of critical areas, you know, steep slopes, wetlands, those sorts of things, and those create a unique set of challenges, and we've heard a lot about that from members of the community advisory, community advisory group. Some of those are the coordination of infrastructure, whether projects are connected to sewer, or they're accommodated with septic systems, how those projects deal with staging. You know, some of the existing lots are on very tight private streets with difficult access, issues around how those private streets get restored, if they're damaged as part of the construction process, the issue of site management, making sure that, you know, things like erosion control measures are kept in place throughout the project, that, you know, if those are moved, that make sure that they're reinstalled properly and properly monitored, and then dealing with impacts potentially to critical areas and environmental constraints, issues such as reasonable use exceptions, how are those applied, and what are the standards used to guide the city's decisions on those. The other two project types deal with subdivisions, short flats, which are smaller subdivisions dealing with a smaller number of lots, and then major subdivisions, which can be quite significant in size and scale. But we want to make sure that we address all of these different project types to ensure that the code produces better outcomes for the city and for the community, which we know is the primary purpose of this effort. The next section I'm going to go through deals with the Phase 2 topics, and you'll see in the PDF document that we sent out earlier, which has quite a bit of detail on the scope of this effort, we tried to break it up into eight categories, which will help guide the process and discussion for this effort, and I'll kind of run through some of those now. The first is code enforcement and penalties. But I think we've heard some early input that code enforcement needs to be improved, and the penalties need to be strong enough that they will result in a change in behavior. And there's a sense that in some cases, developers may be willing to just factor in the cost of fines, you know, into their pro forma, so to speak, and, you know, are sort of using that to violate some of the regulations, and are willing to pay the penalties. So, that's a major issue that we want to address as part of this effort. The next section is a major one. It's residential neighborhood design. So, one of the things that stood out to us in our sort of preliminary code audit is, it really is a lack of detailed subdivision standards. If you go to the subdivision section of the code, it's really focused on process, you know, which is important for subdivisions, but there isn't a lot of guidance on, you know, how streets get laid out, how lots get laid out, and I think some of that has contributed to some of the impacts that we've heard, or negative impacts that we've heard from some of the recent development projects in the city. So, that is a really important one, and we want to address that at a variety of scales. The next one deals with the protection and integration of natural features, so making sure that we have strong consideration for tree protection. We understand the city's already made some headways in that regard, but making sure that those important natural features are integrated well and not negatively impacted from new development. These are really, I think, what makes Sammamish a special place. I think it's a reason that people have been attracted to live here, and want to make sure that that is respected and honored in new residential projects, and that they actually contribute to the sense of place and community character in Sammamish, and are not a distraction. The next one deals with standards for non-residential uses in residential zones. School development has been one. We understand it's been discussed, but there may be other types of non-residential uses that there are not adequate standards to deal with that. Most of the standards in the residential zones are focused on residential development. So, this is a topic that may get pushed to Phase 3, but it's something we appreciate your input on, you know, at this stage, to kind of figure out whether it fits in Phase 2 or is more appropriate for Phase 3. The next one is infrastructure coordination and design. So, how does infrastructure get coordinated in a way that doesn't create negative impacts? Types of infrastructure that we would address would be, you know, sewer and septic, and sort of the relationship with the water sewer district, public and private streets, and how those get designed and managed over time. Really critical to ensure that developments are contributing positively to the build-out of infrastructure in the city, and not creating long-term liabilities for the city as it has to become responsible for maintaining some of that infrastructure. The next topic deals with single-family site and building design, and again, we understand that from Phase 1 updates, that there were some steps taken to address issues, so we want to support and build on that effort. But I think there's a feeling that some of the individual, single-family homes are, the high-fogging scale is sort of overpowering, and could benefit from a better set of site design standards to ensure more compatibility with the desired character of the city of Sammamish. The next topic is construction management, and I touched on this a little bit, as it's a related issue to enforcement, but making sure that the city is adequately requiring construction management plans and staging plans, and making sure that there's adequate monitoring of that and enforcement of that. We've heard a lot of input from members of the community advisory group that, you know, they've been personally and directly impacted from development in their neighborhoods, and so that's something we want to make sure that we're able to provide some relief and ensure that, you know, future projects do not have the same level of negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. And then, the last one, which is a major one, this in part addresses the Unified Development Code, but it's code organization and administration. So, some of these changes include updates to definitions, improvements to the clarity and voice used in the code. The use of graphics is, I think, a really important thing that we want to get your input on, but the code, in some cases, lacks adequate graphics to support some of the concepts that are required in the code, and to be able to, I think, communicate those visually would have benefits, both for developers, the public, and city staff that has to administer that code on a daily basis. This is just a couple of examples, graphic examples that we've used on, this is all from one of our recent projects. This was a project for the city of Bainbridge Island to develop a whole new set of design guidelines, and it had some similarities to the Unified Development Code effort. When we began this project, they had 300 pages of design guidelines, all developed over various time periods with different styles and fonts and formatting, and it was extremely unwieldy and ineffective. We were able to create a consolidated design manual for them of about 80 pages. It was very graphic-heavy. And we also implemented some what's called form-based code elements, which basically develop prescriptive standards for how buildings and sites relate to street frontages, which we understand is an important issue here in Sammamish with how subdivisions relate particularly to arterial frontages. And so, we are considering, you know, proposing some similar graphics that we could help support the new subdivision standards as part of this effort. So, that's just a quick, relevant example there. So, we have 13 members on our community advisory group, and I think we interviewed 12 of the 13, and they were very informative, and we summarized those into a couple of themes that we'd like to share with you tonight, things that really stood out to us. One is that compliance and enforcement of existing regulations is a challenge, and as I stated earlier, you know, a number of property owners had, you know, very detailed stories of being personally impacted from development in their neighborhood, primarily infill development in these cases. But again, we want to improve the enforcement system so that those impacts do not occur. One of the things we think is also important when you're developing development regulations is to really stay upfront, you know, what's important to the community. We did this in Bainbridge Island, where sustainability was a core principle of their subdivision plan. Even though you're going to have very detailed, you know, legalistic standards, you know, having your statements upfront can kind of help orient people and understand, okay, well, I'm developing Sammamish, you know, here are the things that are important to them, and the things that we need to respond to, and we're designing our project. So, that was something we talked about quite a bit. The third one is that new subdivisions are not consistent with Sammamish's character. So, it would be interested in your feedback on sort of what are those primary aspects of Sammamish's character. And a couple of things have stood out to us, you know, the older subdivisions really have a much more rural and wooded feel to them, and that's really stood out, whereas I think some of the newer subdivisions have sort of removed a lot of the older trees and modified topography in ways that have created a very different feel that is sort of contrary to some of those older subdivisions. The natural drainage and topography is obviously really important, a prominent feature in Sammamish, and so how do you design projects that really integrate that in creative and interesting ways? There's lots of great examples of how that can be done, and we'll start to work through those examples as we get further into the project. There is expressed a need for both predictability and flexibility, right? In some cases, residents in particular felt like, you know, and developers, I should say, that there needs to be more predictability. In some cases, it's difficult to understand what the actual standards and requirements are. And then, on the flip side, there's also, I think, an understanding that there needs to be some flexibility and empowerment of staff to be able to come up with potential solutions that create better outcomes. So, it's a bit of a balancing point between predictability and flexibility, but we want to try to achieve both where it makes the most sense. Number five, you know, there seemed to be a broad understanding that Sammamish, of course, is, for many reasons, I'm sure you're familiar with, is a very desirable place to live and will be attracted to growth. We didn't get the sense that anyone was looking to stop development, but there is, I think, a strong desire to shape it in better ways. The next one is infrastructure is not kept pace with growth and coordinate, and growth, with growth, and coordination is a challenge, particularly for older subdivisions. There's a lot of development that still occurs on septic in the city. There are private streets that are, you know, in disrepair, and there are a whole host of challenges for coordinating the maintenance of private streets. This is particularly a challenge in older subdivisions, but something that was talked about extensively. So, those are kind of the six themes that we've come up with, and I believe we have a written summary of these as well. The next example here is for the Unified Development Code. This is an example from Sandy Springs, Georgia, which was done by our partner, Code Studio. And on the right-hand screen, you can see the table of contents, and it's very well organized. It makes sense. You can understand where you can find things. It's all in one location. Personally, I've been a planning director in two communities, one that had a municipal code very similar to Sammamish's, where, you know, things were scattered throughout. It was very difficult and frustrating to administer. And another community where we had Unified Development Code, it was much easier to administer, it was much easier to update, much easier for the public to be able to use as well. So, part of our scope will be first developing the best practices, and then an annotated outline of which sections of the municipal code will be brought into the Unified Development Code. But this will produce a really strong base for future efforts, and make the administration of the code by city staff much, much easier. And it's also an opportunity to add, you know, illustrative graphics to communicate major concepts in the code. The Phase 3 concept, or Phase 3 topics that I addressed earlier, this is the broader list. School development, there's some question whether that'll be in Phase 2 or Phase 3, but we know that's an important topic. Opportunity to look at incentives to help promote better outcomes. So, you know, I think we're going to look to both bring up the baseline standards, but also provide incentives to achieve even better outcomes. Look at elements related to housing affordability, which we know is an important issue, elements related to environmental sustainability, potentially creating architectural or urban design guidelines that address key character objectives, and that might be similar to the example we just showed from Bainbridge Island. And then, there's the opportunity to identify other topics in the scoping phase that could be addressed as well as part of Phase 3, and we look forward to getting your input on that. Public engagement, I've gone over this, I think, mostly, but these are kind of the major efforts. The online survey, we're hoping to launch in a couple of weeks, and we'll probably have, you know, a fairly brief set of questions, you know, focusing on people's perceptions around development in Sammamish. But we also like to do some fun things, like allowing people to upload photo examples, either examples of development in Sammamish they think are either good or bad, or maybe examples they have from other communities they've lived or traveled to that might provide inspiration to us for the code update. And then, finally, the council and commission meetings, and then this engagement event that we'll be scheduling later in the process. And at this point, it looks like it will be an online event, probably through the ConnectSammamish dot com. And that's the end of the presentation. We're looking at, looking for further input from the Planning Commission on the key issues, challenges, and opportunities. We have gone out and toured the city and taken photos, but if you have particular examples you think would be good for us to see, we would appreciate your input on that, and some members of the advisory group will also be doing that as well. And then, the last kind of discussion question is just, you know, getting at this issue of desired character. What do you all see as the major kind of features or attributes that define the desired character for the city of Sammamish? And if we need to, we can refer to the longer PDF document that we sent out earlier today, that has much more detail, including 28 problem statements that identify specifically- that has much more detail, including 28 problem statements that identify specifically what the issues are that we're trying to address, what the intended outcomes are, and potential solutions. And each of those 28 problem statements are categorized by those eight categories that we presented in the beginning of the presentation. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask first before asking the commissioners if they have questions, and these may be somewhat you and also somewhat David Pyle and Kelly Hildy. But I'm wondering if we could frame up a little bit the context of how this fits in with the work that was done last year and even the year before that with the planning commission on development regulations. I'm just curious to make sure that we understand that and that everybody recognizes, you know, what happened with all of that work and how that fits into this.
Yeah, sure. I can start, and David, if you want to add to what I say, please do. I think our intent, of course, is to build upon that work, you know, not necessarily revisit it, but to kind of pick up where that work left off. And as I said in some of the pieces of the presentation, there are some aspects of these topics that have been dealt with, such as single-family design, there's been some changes to how building height has been calculated, there's been some work on tree protection. So, you know, our goal is to not sort of duplicate that effort, but to build from and expand on that work that was previously done and adopted.
And I agree with what Jeff said, and I will add to that as well, that one of the focuses here is we have some issues that have been longstanding in certain geographic portions of the city. The rules that we worked on with Phase One are universal to the whole city, very much helping to shape the future of development. Some of the issues that we're looking at here are more specific to certain geographic areas, and because of that, you know, with Phase One, we really wanted to take a coarser approach and do a heavy lift in transforming our development regulations. Now we're going to take a more granular approach and start to get at some of the finer details that have remained as issues of concern that were not addressed, and we didn't have time or capacity to address in Phase One that were punted to Phase Two. So we're able to now look at those. We have a consultant supporting us. Phase One, you know, I was the consultant doing the work, so didn't necessarily have the capacity that we have now to look at the more finer details.
Great. Okay, thanks. Other commissioners, what questions or comments do you have?
Larry Tranvo here. Oh, go ahead. Anybody else? Okay. Two quick ones. On the information sent out today, number 24 and page 11, I think work stoppage is pretty important tool to have, and you mentioned that prior, the sometimes fines are not severe enough. But work stoppage, I read across that and I liked it. It seems like towards the end of a project, if they haven't done something, it might have to stop work and redo it. Okay. And the other question is a very easy one on number 25, same page, no, yes, that is the landscaping for the future, okay? And they had a, oh, sorry about that. Utilities where you landscape and have them not interfere with utilities in the future. So I'll turn my phone off. Okay. Yeah. So that's, I think that's good because a lot of times they plant trees and they grow up around their power lines or roots go into the watered ones, okay? And one funny one, and this is for Miriam, she's not here, but on page 19, number nine, they talked about the, and you kind of mentioned it before, stoop terracing, but different ways of holding the ground together. And I was wondering if the bonds, those rocks and wire baskets would be another thing that could be included, because now I found out you can order great big ones online and be delivered, just, that's my thought. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. We'll incorporate that feedback into our work.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, well, first off, Jeff, thanks. That was a very clear, articulate presentation, very helpful and nice overall plan, I think. I just have a couple of, I guess, questions for clarification, and one would be, I noticed that Phase Three included environmental sustainability, and I know that part of your questions is what might need to be in Phase Three versus Phase Two, for example, some of non-residential or school. And I also know from some of the problem statements that there are elements that might be related to environmental sustainability, like buffers and heritage trees and so forth. So could you clarify what's in Phase Three environmental sustainability versus some of the elements that might touch on environmental sustainability in Phase Two?
Yeah, I mean, that's a difficult one to answer at this point, because, you know, we haven't completely defined, you know, everything that's included in this phase. But I think the thinking is that Phase Three, I mean, the way that I see it and David can add here, is that those are some, I think, bigger topics, more holistic topics that we could address, whereas Phase Two is addressing more of the immediate issues and concerns. And so, for example, I think environmental sustainability could potentially become part of a new effort to create, say, design guidelines, similar to the example in Bainbridge. But I think the simplest answer is to say that it will, like Phase One is building off of Phase Two, it will kind of pick up from where we leave off on Phase Two.
Okay, thank you. You know, for a comment that I would make on that in terms of basically agreeing with what you're doing, because I can imagine a trade-off between the ability to pull the standards together in a timely manner versus putting in, you know, more and more towards the ideal. And I think that in many ways, getting the standards together so that they can be in use on the timeline that you presented, or even earlier if possible, would be a benefit to the community so that future developments can start to apply them.
I would add, I'd add to this that I agree with what Jeff said, and I appreciate that comment. I think that one of the themes you're going to see here that keeps seeming to pop up is regarding site planning and site management, and there are, you know, some of the most fundamental principles of low-impact development come from proper site planning. You know, don't disturb the ground if you don't have to. Maintain the native soil pad, maintain the native vegetation. Don't go in and supergrade because that's going to strip out that topsoil and impact the permeability and the ability for regeneration of vegetation. So these are all things that I think will work hand-in-hand with the problem statements around site planning and around site management and construction management. One of the things we might see working on later in Phase Three would be building standards, like built green, solar, insulation, other trade-offs where we could incentivize somebody doing the right thing by giving them maybe some flexibility in site planning if they do some other built green elements that relate to the structure. So we're probably not going to see as much that relates to the structure, more of it that relates to the site itself.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. That all makes sense. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Josh.
Couple of questions. You mentioned, I think, the schools in residential zones and going in Phase Two versus Phase Three. Do we know of what the school districts are looking at as far as their short and long-term plans for schools, and is there a reason to bump the school element into Phase Two so that we can capture any new school that they plan on building?
I can try and answer that one. Yeah, yeah, I'll happily jump in here. So this one is, it's similar to the answer that I just gave Mike regarding the phases and how we incorporate built green versus low-impact development. So we're looking at site planning, and we're looking at what impacts come from a development related to site planning. And site planning with schools is a, so it's a non-residential use in a residential district. We do have some standards that already apply, such as perms and screening, but we want to revisit those and make sure those are appropriate while we're talking about site planning in residential areas. The issue around zoning for schools and adequacy of land for schools or availability of land for schools, it's a whole nother topic that we'll probably want to talk about, and as the city grows over time, we want to make sure that the school districts are able to find meaningful assemblages of land where they can actually locate a school. And that's been a challenge for them for all three of our districts, and we think that that is a bit of a bigger conversation, which we would probably want to take up in a Phase Three. So, you know, we're happy to postpone the site planning component. However, we do see that some of the schools are likely to be remodeled, we're likely to see, you know, requests for things like the placement of elastic school space, like portables, on sites. So, you know, what goes along with that? You know, should the school be obligated to provide some sort of screening buffer from portables that are placed closer to the property boundary? That's a site planning question, and it's a transition between the school space and the neighboring neighborhood space that really is at question there.
I think that answers my question. On the, the flexibility that's been mentioned with staff, it was item number four, I think, on one of the slides. I looked in the extra, the screen that was just on, and I didn't get into any more specificity about what that meant. Did the people that were interviewed have any, did they give it any occasion about what they were looking for as far as staff flexibility and what the end result might be? Are we really getting into the weeds? And that would be something to send to later. I realize I'm saying that now, but what's the vision of what staff flexibility means as far as the development regulations go?
I can think of one example. It was, and it was brought up by the development community as well. I think there is a feeling that, for example, the public work standards were mentioned as sort of being inflexible and that maybe there were better solutions, but staff does not have the flexibility to be able to apply that. And so sometimes you end up with an outcome that's less than desirable because the standards are too rigid. So that's probably the best example that I can think of off the top of my head, but maybe David has another one?
Yeah, so there's, there are instances where, you know, what's the right term I'm thinking of? I don't know if it's proper, draconian application of regulation leads to an undesirable outcome. And there is an art in interpretation of development regulations. I tend to see it as, you know, you need to set up each section of your code with an intent and a statement around application, and you then use that statement of intent and application in interpreting how the rule is then applied to a project. And the staff have to, by way of their job, be able to interpret the application of the rule to a project. Our rules don't always allow that to happen, so if we are in the position of repackaging our rules through a Unified Development Code, there is opportunity for us to write at the beginning of each a prelude to each section, an intent statement, and then a statement about interpretation or application. That might be helpful. We also are seeing conflicts, you know, there are inherent conflicts between our sets of rules, like the fact that we're trying to minimize impervious surfaces, yet at the same time, we require a fire truck turnaround, you know, at the end of a street of a certain length that then presents, you know, a certain thousand square feet of impervious surface that then has to be treated as pollution-generating surface, detained or retained, and then ultimately handled with the stormwater system. So you could see where we see some conflicts that were presented with, and the idea there, I think, on the part of the commenter, and I think we heard it from both the public and the commenter, because you have neighbors to projects who are scratching their heads wondering, why is this built this way? The builder said, well, the city made us do it this way. The city said, well, the code said you had to do it, and just the whole cycle and how we go about it leads to an outcome that I don't think anybody really wanted.
Okay, that makes perfect sense to me. I guess my one comment on that or thought is that as we're going through this, it might be useful to show some examples of something that's not exactly directly covered by the code and then provide the public with an example of how it might be work through related to the statement at the top, so that people can have a clear understanding of what that might mean. And then...
Hey, Josh, can I, I just, because that was one of my big topics as well, so I want to pile on in one second and say that. When you start talking about flexibility for staff, I get a little concerned because it's a pretty, to me, it's a pretty short distance from someone having the flexibility to make a better decision and someone being pressured into allowing something that maybe is not appropriate or, in the bigger picture, if you were standing out at the site, wouldn't be as obvious. I just want to make sure that we're cautious about not creating subjectivity or the perception that there's too much subjectivity so that staff feel like they, you know, have too much latitude and can be pushed to be flexible with the rules. We need to come out with the right outcome, I agree with that, but people can take advantage of that, and I just want to make sure that whatever kind of language we develop, we're cautious that those kinds of flexible decisions are made at the right level, and people are empowered to say no and be firm about that when it's appropriate, so not let it swing too far in the other direction either. Sorry, I interrupted you there, Josh, but I wanted to make sure and add that.
No, I appreciate you jumping in there with that because that was a big part of why I asked that question. The other aspect that was mentioned, and we hear it a lot on the internet and the community, is about infrastructure. And so I know that there was so much of infrastructure related to septic versus sewer. Was that what people had in mind when they were commenting and they were being interviewed? Or can you expand on what infrastructure is defined at related to this presentation?
Yeah. So, yeah, definitely sewer. We have a member from the water sewer district and from King County who administers the septic. So that was brought up, and that is a big topic for cities, you know, how and when to require sewer extensions, what are your connection requirements, how are those funded? Definitely was a big topic. Also, private streets were brought up, and we had at least one member who lived on a private street and had a number of personal stories of impacts from, well, one, I think, first, the issue of how many homes get built on a private street, I think, is a topic, right? For both the actual street itself and being able to withstand that amount of activity, but also emergency access, which is another important issue. So that was another one that was brought up. Stormwater, potential stormwater impacts, and how water is dealt with both during construction and post-construction was also brought up as an issue. So I think it was fairly, fairly universal and feeling like maybe developers were not adequately paying into the system, so to speak, to support sort of the orderly expansion and coordination of infrastructure. And I think sewer is a good example because, you know, every project that gets built that is not on sewer is a project that's not contributing, you know, to the extension of that, which makes future connections and expansions that much more difficult. of that, which makes future connections and expansions that much more difficult. So, so those, those I think were, were the highlights that were brought up in the interviews.
Okay, thank you. And that's, that's it for my questions.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Vertuja.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. I think the one thing that is really, I think, going to be really useful and something that I think all of us were really wanting is that advisory committee of residents who live in Sammamish, I think that is going to help the regulations and the community and the planning commission and the council as well. So, thank you for, you know, staff and to the, for making that happen. So, I think the, you know, the two things at which I wanted a little bit more information on, and I think I'm really curious, is you specifically mentioned subdivisions, you know, subdivisions, that there's a percentage of subdivisions, subdivisions in Sammamish which do not reflect the community character or the neighborhood character of Sammamish. So, do you have data that can tell us what percentage is it? I mean, Sammamish is a relatively newer city and so what percentage of Sammamish subdivisions have been constructed under the existing code which do not really reflect the community character? Or you can answer it otherwise too, like which ones do, you know, actually show the neighborhood character?
Yeah, well, we have a couple of examples sort of put through here. Maybe it's the opening slide. But this is, you're probably familiar with this, this is one of the projects on 228 where there's this project and then the one sort of what would be behind me or to the right of the photo on the opposite side of the street. And both of these projects have their backyards, you know, face the street. There is extensive landscaping in some cases, but it doesn't really have the wooded feel of some of the older subdivisions. And it creates both an awkward relationship, you know, for the public on the street and certain, sort of how it presents itself to the street, but also for, I think, the homeowners themselves and sort of having their backyard, you know, immediately on a four or five lane road. So, that to me has a very different feeling than the older subdivisions. I don't know if I have a photo in here, although I do take it, but it just, it feels, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the term rural by design, but there's a great book called Rural by Design. It's a kind of a wonky planning book, but it's, it's basically about how you take sort of subdivisions or often residential neighborhoods and create more of a rural looking feel. Doesn't necessarily mean that's truly rural, but it has some of the qualities, I think, that some of the older subdivisions is very wooded, the architecture and housing designs are much more varied. It just has a much more natural and organic feel to it where I think some of the newer subdivisions, you know, they're, they're dealing with economies of scale, they're mass grading their site, they're removing the trees, so it's usually easier for construction. All of the vegetation that's removed, you know, creates challenges with stormwater and environmental impacts. And I think that, to me, stands out as being pretty contrary to, to the character. And I think it's most pronounced on those sort of major streets. You know, if it's, if it's sort of maybe the same project, but it's more buffered or more, you know, a little bit more surrounded by trees and vegetation, it doesn't have as much of a visual impact. But, but those, I think, are the ones that really stand out to me and I think there are some simple, some simple standards that we could come up with that would be easy to apply that would, would, you know, really help address that issue. So, you know, we don't, I couldn't give you a specific percentage, it's probably something you could analyze, maybe GIS and maybe work with the city to figure that out, but, but I, it's, it's fairly widespread, I would say, just from my own experience, you know, with, with the numbers of the new projects. But I'd be curious on your thoughts.
Yeah, I just wanted a quick clarification. When you said it's fairly widespread, what, what part is widespread? I didn't quite catch that, that the-
What part's widespread is that I think as you travel through the community, you see these instances where the design was not done in a way that contributes to the city's character. So, I just, I guess I'm saying less like a, a number, but more like it's very prominent in your sort of experience in the community, traveling on major streets or walking on the sidewalks. I don't know if I answered your question, but, but it's a-
That's one of my, my thoughts, definitely. So, my other question is, you know, based on your experience as an urban planner, do people's expectations of what their neighborhood's character should look like depend on the topography? So, for example, if I'm living, you know, like right on Lake Sammamish, I mean, there the houses are very close together, right? Like if you notice that they're very close, there's hardly any trees or buffers. So, maybe their expectation of what their neighborhood should look like is very different than somebody who lives in an older neighborhood and, you know. So, is that your experience as well, that expectations of the character is dependent on the neighborhoods that they live in?
Yes, yes, absolutely. In fact, I think that should be considered to be a core component of, of a new set of subdivision standards. And it kind of goes back to the discussion we just had a few minutes ago around flexibility, right? And part of that flexibility is to be able to respond and design based on the surrounding context, right? So, your example of, you know, developments on the waterfronts are going to take on a certain character, as you said, they're probably close together because it's expensive and there's only, you know, so much linear feed to waterfront. In other locations that are on hillsides, you know, they should, the, the design of the project should reflect that it's on a hillside instead of trying to, you know, flatten the hillside and create flat development paths. So, that's the kind of flexibility that we would, I think, recommend is where there are specific sites, site conditions that are incorporated into the design of the project. And that's how the flexibility is applied. So, for example, if, if you're developing a site that has a stream corridor, you know, that needs to be honored and respected in the design of that project. If your project doesn't have that and it has significant topography of trees or wetlands, then that can be a way to incorporate that into your site design. This is something we did in, in the Baybridge Island project where one of the first steps that you have to go through for the design review process is to submit a context analysis, you know? What are the natural features that you have on your site? Are there wildlife corridors? Is there, you know, other habitat considerations? Even how are you incorporating these into your, into your project so that those, those features become assets and not something to sort of remove and control? So, yes, to answer your question, that's, I think, a big part of what would make more successful residential projects from a design perspective.
Thanks. And when, if, you know, if unified development code is part of Phase Two, does that apply to subdivisions and also single-family homes or, you know, independent structure? What, everything related to development, right? Like it'll be under one code or is it just for subdivisions?
Nope, it would be, it would be everything. In fact, one of the principal reasons for creating a unified development code is that, you know, initially, a lot of cities established a title for subdivisions and a title for like zoning, which deals with specific individual lots or properties. And so, one of the purposes of a unified development code is to kind of bring that together and have more synergy. So, unified development code will include all of that and this phase will, of course, include updating a number of those standards, but at least some of the content of the unified development code will be existing code that's sort of be formatted under the structure.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, one more comment. Well, this actually builds on the prior discussion with Levertuja. And I'm looking at the Phase Two code update summary that was sent today and specifically problem statement number seven about fundamental design criteria for subdivisions. And so, I think part of what you're describing in terms of looking at the environment and the, you know, topography and so forth would sit into the development of the standards for the new subdivisions. I'm wondering if in your thinking or scoping, that would also include various sizes, cost of the housing itself? In other words, allowing flexibility for some relatively low-income housing or more affordable housing as well as, you know, kind of more expensive housing? And, and how hard is it to do to incorporate all of that into the design standards for subdivisions?
Yeah, so, we do, we do want to address that, you know, how much we actually tinker with the, with like the density and, and zoning. I think that's, that's sort of less a part of this phase, but it's probably open for discussion. One of the things that we want to do as part of our effort to create graphics is to create some really simple, what we call housing typologies. So, it'd be taking all of the different residential zones from R1 to R18 and basically creating these little diagrams that would show the relationship between the street, the configuration and orientation of the parcel and the actual building itself. And then, once we had a baseline understanding of, of what the current standards are, we could tinker with those to create any modifications to that. And I think that would provide a really good base to start to explore maybe some more innovative type housing, housing typologies, maybe things like cottage housing or innovative uses of accessory dwelling units. And maybe that conversation happens in, more in Phase Three, which housing affordability is one of the topics that's already been identified. So, I don't know how far we'll get in, in, you know, looking at sort of new typologies or density strategies, but I think we'll certainly create a really good foundation to be able to have that discussion and, and be able to address at least the issues that have been identified so far and, you know, hopefully support a continued effort to, to improve housing affordability in the city.
So, I'll, I'll add on to what, what Jeff said. And if you recall, as part of Phase One, we did talk a bit about, not necessarily affordable housing, but trying to provide diversity in housing. And Sammamish actually, you know, in, in one area that we don't see utilized hardly at all, is ahead of the curve in promoting duplexes. Our code actually allows for duplexes on corner lots to count as one unit. And then, our code goes one step further and it allows for duplexes that are affordable within a certain AMI to be counted as one unit. So, in theory, if you were building a duplex on a corner lot that was affordable to a certain percentage of AMI, you could get four units. And our code would allow that in place of one unit. Another thing that our code does already that addresses some diversity in housing choices is, and we did this with, with Phase Two, is we, we definitely promoted accessory dwelling units by allowing for a different setback that would apply to an ADU that's less than a thousand square feet in size. And, and so, we, you know, we've raised these in forums like Arch and other forums we have with the planning directors. And, and it seems that Sammamish is ahead of the curve on this in terms of our regulations, but we don't actually see it being implemented. So, we're curious about that market choice that's being made by builders and by homeowners as to why it's not being implemented. You know, what further could we do to help see that implemented? And I really appreciate what Jeff said with regard to the, the relationship of each of these different types of units and how they are oriented and the help there in the community trying to understand what the outcome will be that they will get. That's really important because we hear a lot of concern about people just not knowing what a development will look like because we don't have these standards in place and these graphics in our code to help guide someone's understanding of what it might look and feel like.
Thanks for the elaborations. It makes sense, thank you.
I, I see Larry with his hand raised. Go ahead, Larry.
Well, I want to thank, this follows up a little bit on Mike and really impressed by your, the displays and your answers, Jeff. And David just said something, I had written down that example that you gave on 228, I think, and there's a lot of houses in Sammamish. Was that the arch subsidized housing that was on land that the city donated? And they, there is, I just-
Maybe, I, I thought this maybe was a Habitat for Humanities project, but the-
Yeah, that's good.
The, the project next to it is basically the same issue. I guess, that's, that's it.
That's my point where, and I think David just said that we, we need to be open for all types of development, at least open in consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there are, I didn't mean to insinuate there are positive aspects of that project as well. I just thought it was a good example of sort of the relationship between the, the buildings and the, the major street.
So, I had a couple of comments as well, which actually I think the nature of the comments by the rest of the commission, in my opinion, shows how smart they all are because they kind of reflect my comments as well. So, but I'll make mine anyway just to add to the conversation. One is on the topic of housing variety, I would just reiterate what was said in that when we did this the first time around and as we've continued this conversation, it's not just affordable housing, it's trying to find ways to not only allow, but encourage just the variety. So, that what we see right now, it seems, most often being built is house after house after house that are 5,000 square foot, six-bedroom, five feet apart, eight feet apart houses. And, you know, that's not what housing variety is and so we're hoping to incentivize something different than that. And if we can do affordable housing as part of that, that's great, but at least some variety. Another thing, the topic of rural, I think, my one comment about that, I noticed that and had made a comment in my notes about it. I like that idea, I know a lot of people use that word rural. I think a lot of the development we see is actually, feels much closer to urban when you're in it than rural. And so, I would just encourage that we be careful not to start to aim towards something that's not really achievable and end up failing, but at least try to move the needle as much in that direction as we can. Frankly, with some of the development we've seen, even if we could just get more towards suburban instead of the, the stuff we see getting built, people would be much more happy with that, much less rural. I would love to see some of the character of the older neighborhoods with housing variety and more trees maintained. If we can get close to that, then we've been successful. The, the, I want, the other topic I had was a theme that I was thinking about throughout this is when we talk about some of these topics and when you look through the list that you, that was sent out, I think we all have an idea in our mind of what, what it is we're talking about. And frequently, that is a subdivision development, you know, 20 houses or 50 houses or whatever it is. But I think it's also very important to, and you've said this, but I want to be cautious that we think about it this way. How do these things apply to someone that wants to, you know, add a bedroom to their house or someone that wants to develop a single-family home in an older neighborhood? There are still certainly important topics there, but it's a much different, to me, it's a much different situation and a different set of players. And we should always be cautious about thinking about how these rules may apply to different kinds and groups of people within the community, not just to developers coming in to building a subdivision. And that's really an important thing to me that the, that the, you know, as we revise the code, that it reflects that wide variety of possibilities.
Right. Thank you. We'll make sure we do that.
And I think maybe just as a clarification, just to be clear for anybody who happens to be watching this or listening later, really, none of this applies to town center, correct? Town center is a whole separate topic and we should just be real clear that that's the case.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's all I had. Anybody else have anything?
I just want to make a comment and, and thank you for bringing the point mark of simplicity in reading the code for everyone. I can tell you and I'm sure, Jeff, you've heard it in your advisory committee as well, is that sometimes it's so difficult for people to just understand what they're supposed to do, especially if they're working on their own. So, thank you, Mark, for bringing that point up. I think it's really important.
Absolutely.
Okay, if nobody has anything else, I'll say thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the presentation and the conversation.
Great. Yeah, thank you all very much. It's great to meet you and, uh, very much look forward to working with you.
Okay, thanks. Let's move on to our next topic on the agenda. And I know that, uh, everyone has just been sitting on the edge of their seat with excitement to talk about wireless communication and, and, uh, where, like, the wireless code. So I see Evan's face popping on there, so Evan, go right ahead and thrill us with this exciting topic.
I knew you were excited, Mark. I was excited to bring it back to you. Good evening. I'll actually quickly turn it over to David, but, um, for those who don't know me, my name is Evan Fisher and I'm a management analyst with the, uh, with BCD, and I am the project manager on this. So throughout the process, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Always happy to help and answer and/or find you the answers you need. And with that, David, I will kind of turn it over to you and Brittany with AHBL, who will be walking us through a presentation.
Yeah, no, no need to turn it over to me, Evan. You did a great introduction, so thank you for that. And I'll pass it off to Brittany.
All right. Thank you, guys. Let me, um, just make sure you're seeing me and you're seeing my screen. So yes, following that up tonight, that was a great conversation. Going to be brief, I know that you guys have seen the wireless code several times now. I think this might be your sixth time seeing it, which has to be a record, so you guys are good sports. So what we're doing tonight is going to go over the wireless code. We have made some changes, um, uh, some, you know, maybe kind of considered substantial that we wanted to bring your attention to before, um, the public hearing and then, um, kind of sending this off to city council for their action. So let me go ahead and, um, I'll first just talk a little bit about what's changed in the code since you guys saw it last year. We did, uh, kind of rework the permitting process for wireless, uh, facilities and we have provided some example scenarios that are in your packet. Um, we think that those do a good job of kind of walking through what some, uh, you know, actual applications might be that the city might see and how those would be permitted. And then just talk about what we're expecting, what you should be expecting next at your next meeting. So first, um, uh, as you might remember, the code was very lengthy. It was maybe almost 40 pages in, in Word. It was going to be a very tedious code for applicants and for staff and for the public to be able to, um, to understand and to, to implement. So we have, uh, in our edits, gone through and substantially, um, uh, chipped away at that 40-page length. We, um, were able to do that by simplifying, um, and condensing the wireless, um, requirements for, uh, small cells into one section and for macro cells and to, or macro facilities into another section. That helped also, I think, to streamline the code. Uh, and we took, uh, the design standards out of the code. That really helped to kind of reduce the length of it. And I'll go over a little bit where those are now. But the first thing that I wanted to bring your attention to is that we had this, this whole section on citing hierarchy where we tried to steer people towards, um, citing wireless facilities in places that the city, uh, preferred, um, before they go on to considering other locations that might be technically necessary to consider. Um, we have formatted this now into more of a land use table that's consistent with what you might be familiar with in the zoning code. So we have created land uses for all of the different types of wireless, um, facilities that we expect to see. And we have identified in which zoning districts where they are permitted, um, and require a wireless, uh, permit or where they may require a conditional use permit or where they are prohibited. So that was kind of the first, um, thing that we did to try to make this code a little bit more, um, user-friendly. The next thing, um, is that we wanted to make it more straightforward, what permits were required. That was something that was a little bit confusing in the, in the original, um, code that you saw. Um, we still have retained exemptions. We wanted to make sure that there were certain wireless facilities that are really, um, minor and, and should be exempt, such as, um, temporary wireless facilities that might be for an event, TV antennas and eligible facility requests, which the city, um, has to meet a very ambitious shot clock set by the FCC and we wanted to make sure the city's able to do that. Um, the next is that we created an expedited wireless use permit. So this is where we've tried to restructure those tiers into incentivizing people through, um, a permitting process that is, uh, less onerous. So the expedited wireless use permit would be those facilities that we want people to consider first. And those would be small cell, uh, small wireless facilities that meet all of the design standards that are going to be incorporated in another, in a separate design document. The next, uh, permitting process would be, uh, an applicant might apply for a standard wireless use permit. This would be for small wireless facilities that, um, meet the location criteria as per the land use table, but perhaps they can't meet a specific design standard because of the, um, site considerations, topography, or, um, it just doesn't work technically for their, for their, um, network objectives. So that they would apply for a standard wireless use permit then. Both an expedited wireless use permit and a standard wireless use permit will be Type 1 decisions. Um, and then permitted, uh, macro cell facilities, so these are, um, uh, from the land use table, a few locations that we understand are going to be, um, areas that, uh, might be considered for a macro cell, um, and should be permitted with a standard, a standard wireless use permit. And again, they're going to meet a bunch of design, um, criteria, um, dimensional requirements to be able to be eligible for that permitting process. The next permitting process is a conditional use permit. So this would be for small wireless facilities that, uh, need to deviate from a design standard, um, a location standard or a dimensional standard, um, as well as macro cell facilities that, uh, the code requires a conditional use permit or if they were able to get a standard wireless use permit, but they need, um, to deviate, then they would be able to apply for a conditional use permit. Um, and so one thing to note, um, we retained this from the original code, but they will be required to submit technical analysis demonstrating, um, that it's technically infeasible to meet design standards and that would be reviewed by a third party. So last, we, we removed, as I mentioned, the lengthy design standards that were in the code where, um, uh, city staff had reviewed, uh, example code, uh, design standards from other communities and have opted to go with a much more simplified design standard document that is separate from the code. This will make the code much more easy to, um, to understand and administer and then, um, the city will be able to have kind of a, a separate document similar to, um, your, you know, uh, standard, um, that, or your design standards for, say, public works, um, that would have additional criteria, um, that would kind of govern the, the design and look and feel of the, the wireless facility. So next, um, I'm going to go over a couple flow charts that we've created. The city asked us to look at some specific scenarios of applications that might be received and, um, identify what the permitting process would be. And we had a separate planner at our firm who had no experience with the code, had never read it before, go through the code and see if she could understand, uh, what the permitting process would be and whether or not, um, you know, there were any things that she thought should, should maybe be clarified. Um, and the good news is in doing that, we did find that, um, it seems like it's quite straightforward to someone who's not had any experience writing the code was able to understand it. Um, so first, I'm just going to kind of run through a couple of these. Um, this was, uh, uh, an example where, say, um, an applicant comes into the city and they'd like to mount a small wireless facility onto the Bank of America building. So they would go through the wireless, um, code land use table and they would identify that, um, building-mounted wireless facilities in the CB zone are permitted use. They are subject to those permitting requirements, such as, um, they have to be spaced, uh, uh, 350 feet from, um, another wireless facility and they have to meet all the design standards. So in a space, those would be kind of the, the two items that would need to, to be present for it to be, um, uh, permitted, um, subject to an expedited wireless use permit. So they would then go through those requirements and they would apply for an, and if they meet all of them, they'd apply for an expedited wireless use permit. There would not be an application notice requirement because, you know, these are, these are identified by the city as being areas where we think that wireless facilities should go. And then the director, director would be, um, the decision maker for the expedited wireless use permit. The next is a freestanding, uh, small wireless facility that is co-located on an existing pole in the ozone. So what we've, um, shown here in this, uh, picture are some of the existing poles that, um, are, say, along 228. And so if a, uh, provider wanted to come in and locate a small wireless facility on one of these existing poles, um, that would be a permitted use, they would go through again all of the requirements for small wireless facilities and they'd make sure it's consistent with the design standards. And if it is, they'd be able to apply for an expedited wireless use permit. If, for some reason, they, um, could not comply with all of the design standards and they needed to request a deviation, then they would apply for a standard wireless use permit. Um, this is, again, similar, it's a Type 1 decision, does not require notification and the director would issue. Um, the next one is, uh, a new small wireless facility that's cited on a PSE utility pole. So again, they go through the wireless, um, code land use table, identify that it's a permitted use and they go through and make sure that it's consistent with the, the city's, um, standards for small wireless facilities and design standards. In this case, they would need to apply for a franchise agreement. Actually, I think that's the same for the previous one as well. Um, but we wanted to make that, uh, kind of noted that they have to have a franchise agreement to be able to cite a wireless facility in the, the right of way. But if they're citing on a PSE utility pole and needs all the design standards, they would, um, be eligible for an expedited wireless use permit. And this is a graphic that shows, um, kind of an example of what it might look like, uh, PSE, or on a utility pole in Ballard. Um, and so you kind of see where the small cell antenna is and then where its power supply. And again, subject to all, um, design standards that would be in a separate document. Um, next, uh, this goes, this flow chart goes through an example of a freestanding small wireless facility on a new pole in the R8 zone. So this is a little bit different because it's located in the right of way that's adjacent to a residential zone. Uh, it would be subject to a conditional use permit. So in this case, we want to make sure that it's, um, going to fit into the neighborhood. It's going to have to prove that, um, it requires to be cited in this location due to technical, uh, requirements with the provider's network objectives. Um, and so it'll have to meet, um, conditional use permit requirements that are specified in the code as well as, um, you know, any of the design standards that they are able to meet. So they would apply then and for a conditional use permit and the notice for this would be providing notice to all adjacent property owners. Uh, and then the director is the decision maker for a, uh, conditional use permit. Next, going through a macro cell facility, um, that's co-located with an existing wireless, uh, facility. So these, um, again, per the, the wireless codes use table, they are going to be a permitted use since they're co-locating, that's, that's a goal for us. Um, they would meet all of the requirements for macro cells and they would apply for a standard wireless use permit. For macro facilities, they are required to provide, uh, written notice to all property owners within a thousand feet. Um, and then the director is the decision maker for, for that wireless use permit. Um, this is a, a scenario where a macro cell facility, um, an application is made to the city for a new tower, um, that is 110 feet tall because they need to get above the trees in the CB zone where it's going to be located. So, uh, the code does require that a macro cell facility be a pole that is, um, taller than a small, than a small wireless facility, but no taller than 90 feet in height, including the antenna and equipment. So this would be in excess of those 90 feet. So while it would be a permitted use, um, it does not meet the dimensional, um, requirements that they would need to apply for a CUP. So as per the, the previous one, the notice is to provide all property owners within a thousand feet and the director would issue the CUP subject to them meeting all of the, the requirements that forthen the code. And, um, I think the last example, um, this would be a replacement, an application that's made to replace an antenna on an existing wireless facility in the, um, on a, uh, on, say, a PSE pole. Um, this would be considered an eligible facilities request because they're just, um, replacing, they're swapping out equipment. So they would then apply for a letter of exemption. Um, the director would issue the letter of exemption, they'd be able to go in and swap out that equipment, provided that it's, uh, not going to substantially change the dimensions of the, of the tower. Okay, um, so, uh, with that, um, you know, we are scheduled to come back before you guys, uh, November 5th for a public hearing and then we are hoping that, um, we will get a recommendation from you, um, in, you know, the time between now and then. Um, you know, we're hoping that we can iron out any issues that you guys might see with the code and, and just address any, any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Radine. Anybody have questions or comments?
Um, just a quick question, has 5G stuff being started, has, has that started implementing in, around Washington State? Do we have a lot of, uh, implementation of 5G here or not yet?
Sure, um, I mean, we are starting to see, uh, you know, as part of the, the small cells, they are including equipment that could be used for both 4G and 5G. Um, so I would say yes, that, um, that that is present in Washington and that we're going to continue to see that the, um, the equipment kind of be adapted so that way it can be, um, deployed for 5G. I'm not sure if, uh, there's any areas where they have like a, a full 5G network.
Thanks.
Good, Josh. So there's been substantial changes from what we had approved a long time ago to where we're at now. And my concern is we went over that many times with a fine-tooth comb and kind of ironed out, we thought, everything that we were concerned about, from what we heard from the public to what we saw ourselves. And now with this being so different, it's going to be very difficult to, it's apples and oranges now, I think. It would be helpful if we saw the previous code with comments in it that shows this was moved here, this was taken away, this is covered in design standards, uh, we don't have this anymore because of this reason. Cause right now we're kind of starting from scratch, I think, in a lot of ways. I don't want to really be there. I kind of like to understand exactly, be able to compare this across. Cause a lot of work went into the previous one. I don't want to lose any of the previous public comments we got from people. So that's one. And then my, I guess my next comment is if the, uh, carriers are listening, the last time we went through this, we got comments two hours before or even less when we were coming before the public or hearing a proposal. And, uh, that's not enough time to address any of your concerns in a substantive ways. So if you can get your comments to us well ahead of that so that we can actually review it and, uh, maybe implement some of your concerns or fix some of your concerns, that would be excellent because otherwise it's very difficult to make decisions on the dais when we haven't had time to fully vet, uh, the comments. So that's all I've got.
Great, Josh. Thanks. I'll just, uh, quickly kind of comment on your comments. For your first comment, I can work on putting something together that sort of, um, tracks the major changes and where things have gone from the version you saw previously, uh, to where we are now. Brittany, Brittany and I can work on that for you. And, um, I believe you will be hearing comments tonight from providers. Just a note, I did, they saw this for the new draft for the first time, uh, Friday and I sent it to them on Monday, so along, the same time that the public saw this new draft. But, um, I appreciate your comments on, um, early notice for changes from that.
And if I, if I can add on to what Evan said, you know, what, some of what we actually did here is in response to their comments. So I, I believe they, they will see a lot of what we did with this code as favorable to their interests. You know, one, one of the things we did in reconsidering this is we, over time, received a lot of communication, you know, most of the, the, I, I, I was the recipient of many, uh, email strings from several of the subdivisions in the city in March and April and May when people were working from home, their kids were online, doing, doing remote learning. And they were looking for any possible alternative to Comcast services or other, other services because they just didn't have enough bandwidth. And we, we got a lot of questions from people about why the city was not at the forefront of the fifth generation of wireless and why we were still plumbing their homes with cables when we could be doing it from poles. And, um, that caused us to really rethink what we were doing with this code and, and try to not necessarily facilitate the deployment of these, but not, but to really make it something that, that everyone can understand the rules and how we get this, this to, to be built out in our city. There was, um, more interest as opposed to opposition seen at that point in time. Uh, and these were real scenarios where people just could not figure out, they, you know, they're tech workers and they can't access their tech company from home and it was a big problem. So we're, we're really, uh, conscious of that, um, and, you know, happy to mine out some of those old email strings, but they were, there were some fascinating conversations where you had, you know, 50 people from one neighborhood on an email string and everybody in the neighborhood was affected by the lack of service and they really wanted to see something else added as an alternative. by the lack of service, and they really wanted to see something else added as an alternative or option for them.
I appreciate that, and I'm one of those people who would love to see 5G rolled out. But at the same time, those opinions, I think, might change for a lot of people as soon as shovel goes into their neighborhood. And that's also what we've got to look out for, is what it means five, 10 years from now, when we've got 50 billion of these small poles in people's neighborhoods. And that's what we were really concerned about from the outset. So I just want to make sure we don't lose that, while also balancing the fact that we are still looking forward in time and need to embrace new technology, so.
I will second Josh's comments.
So there was, there was one additional issue we wanted to raise with the commission on this, and that is the question about, you know, currently, the way the code is set up, it requires that small wireless that's being deployed in batches would require that the provider obtain a franchise agreement with the city for the use of the right-of-way for the purpose of placing poles and equipment. The code is not set up right now that would require, in an instance, a macro facility obtain a franchise agreement. We see that franchise agreements are valuable because it allows us to have an opportunity to negotiate terms for use of the city's rights-of-way in advance of us receiving a permit application for establishment of that facility. So, you know, the question for the commission is, is do you think that requiring that all wireless facilities that are placed in our right-of-way would require a franchise agreement is a good thing? Or do you think that we should still allow for individual facilities to be placed in the right-of-way through a, what is called a type D right-of-way permit, which is a right-of-way lease agreement that goes with it? So it's kind of like a mini franchise agreement, but the city council's not involved in that. The benefit that we see to a franchise agreement is it allows for the public to provide comment on the agreement and the terms of the agreement to the council, who ultimately approves that agreement, and allows these facilities to be placed in our right-of-way.
Are you looking for a response right now, David? I mean, I think that we would need to understand perhaps a little bit more about the difference. I would say that if the majority of these systems for small cell poles and, you know, 5G, componentry are going to be deployed by the big, whatever it is now, three wireless providers, then it feels like a franchise agreement is still an appropriate thing to do because they're going to be in the right-of-way in many locations. And we're not talking about a large number of entities, but I don't know. I guess maybe if there's multiple small entities, maybe then a different approach would make more sense.
Yeah, so it could be, you know, that if they exceed a certain number of facilities in the city right-of-way, that then they are required to come in and obtain a right-of-way permit. That's one approach, or, excuse me, obtain a franchise agreement. That's one approach we could take. So if somebody wanted to place a, one macro tower in the city, and they wanted to do that through a lease agreement, which is a, you know, we offer for other utilities, they then could do that. But if they were getting up to, say, five of these facilities in the city, that fifth one would require they come in and actually negotiate a franchise agreement with the city, which would help us get some predictability as to how they're managing their facilities. It would help us understand what their deployment plans were. There are certain things that we can require as a means of their franchise agreement with the city that we cannot require in a one-off instance for a macro facility that is going through a lease agreement. So that's the difference, is that, not only that, but it is something that is more publicly visible, that involves elected officials actually endorsing a proposal for a franchise to use the city's right-of-way property, as opposed to the individual staff member, you know, typically it's the city engineer or appointee that ends up being the one that makes the decision around the right-of-way lease. And it really is a non-discretionary decision. It's just sort of, there's a term, they pay a certain amount to use it, they get to use it. Versus a franchise agreement, which is really looking more holistically at how that entity is using the city's right-of-way for their, the purpose of their business and providing that infrastructure.
I guess my response, I don't see anybody else necessarily with comments. My response to that would be, we should, at least in general, try to treat everyone in a consistent way. So if we have those two paths for other utilities, we should have a similar approach with deployment of wireless infrastructure. You know, so that if it's, if it's a large provider that's everywhere, and that's a franchise agreement, that's a franchise agreement. If it's someone, which I'm not envisioning that, but if there's someone small coming in and want to put in one, normally, if it was any other utility that wanted to do something small on one location, and it's a lease, then that's what we should do. There should be consistency in how we treat these kinds of facilities within the city.
Thank you.
Hey, the one other question I had, and perhaps it was mentioned, and I didn't catch it or didn't understand, I noticed a comment about the revised code, that the pre-app requirements were removed. And I was wondering if we could just, if I could hear just a touch more about why that was the case, or what, does that change really anything, practically speaking, or why was that done?
Sure, yeah. No, that's a good question. So the pre-application meeting being a requirement could trigger the city's shot clock for the particular applications, which are set by the FCC. And so we have to, we have to, you know, strive to do our best to meet those shot clocks. Either, you know, requiring any of the application materials be submitted in advance, or requiring a pre-application meeting, those are things that we wanted to be careful, that doesn't, that they don't put the city in a position where if a pre-application meeting is held, the shot clock starts ticking, and then once they make an application, the city now has an insufficient amount of time to issue, to review it and issue a decision before, you know, the shot clock expires. So the pre-application meeting, I believe, could still be held. It's just that we want to, we want to make sure that we're not requiring it, and as part of the application requirements inadvertently starting the shot clock.
But staff would still get the appropriate amount of, you know, information, would be able to review it and everything. It doesn't necessarily change that, so that they have to, they're under some kind of different amount of time pressure because they didn't have enough information, right? It didn't really change any of that. It just changed the potential and back to the shot clock.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely correct. So part of the application requirements, staff would still require everything that's necessary to be able to review the application. But we just want to make sure that we don't, in requiring things in advance of the permit application date, inadvertently start that shot clock. And that's something that legal review identified.
Thanks. I think Larry had a comment.
Well, a question, the way I interpret the flow chart, this applies to not just 5G, but in case we later had a 6.3G come in, we wouldn't have to go through this exercise again?
Yeah, yeah, you're right. So the way that small cell, the small wireless facilities are defined, it's really kind of based on the dimensions. So if there is a sixth generation of wireless, or, you know, even as the 5G kind of evolves, the idea would be that it can fit into that definition, that we don't need to go back and, you know, revise the code. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, kind of in what we're doing, that there's some flexibility, because this technology is continually evolving, and each provider has their own type of antenna and canister, and it's all very specific to their kind of individual network needs, and how, you know, how their spectrum is designed and deployed. So, yeah, you're correct. It won't box us out of, if there is another generation of wireless, or if, you know, something just kind of changes in the way that it's being deployed.
Anyone else with comments or questions? Oh, I see Mike over there. Go ahead, Mike.
I think my hand was out of picture for a moment. This is more, I think, educate me briefly, maybe others, but I read in the summary of the changes about removal of the design guidelines in the code, and replacing that with the communications facility standards document to allow some flexibility for changing as technology changes and so forth. What's the practical application of that, like, in terms of approvals and so forth? I'm just kind of curious about how that would facilitate ease of changing the standard.
Yeah, so that's a good question. I believe that any amendments to the design standards have to go before the planning commission and then the city council for their approval. So if there are changes to those documents, that would be before you again.
That's accurate. And the good news there, though, is that they're bundled together, so it's simplified in the update. We're not cracking open the code, we're cracking open the design standards. And the purpose there is we're trying to affect how it looks and feels, as opposed to where it can be placed and what the permit process is.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Looks like no, so I'll say thank you to Brittany, and to Evan as well for, and we'll look forward to our next review of wireless code.
I know you can't wait, Mark. Don't pretend.
Yeah, and I think bringing you guys back, kind of a comparison document, and we were very careful, I wanted to note, in translating the citing hierarchy to the land use table, because I think that is the biggest kind of substantial change, aside from the design standards, in making sure that everything fits into what you guys did see in that original document. So I think we'll be able to document that for you.
Great, we'll look forward to that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we'll do agenda topic, public comment. We'll see if Gregory's still on the phone or called back, I guess.
I'm going to do one real quick here, Mark, just to read the proclamation one more ti, or the, yeah, proclamation one more time. Pursuant to the governor's emergency proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual planning commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and the public comment can still be submitted. For agenda public comment, for verbal comment, up to seven minutes, a verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in, call the following number, and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. The access code is 699-839-229. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute, and the meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You'll hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. So it looks like we already have one caller here. So I will go ahead and allow caller three. Please begin by stating your name and where you live, for the record. Caller three, go ahead. It looks like you're already unmuted.
All right, I'm going to assume that's me. This is Gregory Bush with Wireless Policy Group, and I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. Our offices are in Issaquah. So first, I'd like to thank the planning commission for the opportunity to speak at the session. We really appreciate the reorganization and streamlining of the draft code. It's a lot more readable and easier to interpret. It's a great improvement in that regard. We've done a preliminary review, AT&amp;T's done a preliminary review of the draft to receive this Monday. Unfortunately, we haven't had enough time to provide detailed comments, but we'll have those over to you soon. Some comments will focus on the substantial changes in the code and suggest a few clarifications for consistency and readability. But to provide a bit of a sneak preview, I can anticipate some issues cropping up in our comments, who'll probably be on page 14 of tonight's packet, which is section 21A 56-102 regarding private street locations for small wireless facilities. The previous drafts stated explicitly that small wireless facilities on private land, on utility poles that are on privately-owned roadways, would be treated similarly to utility poles in the public right-of-way. And this one, it's not quite as clear for, of course, that's if the HOA approves of the small wireless facilities on utility poles on HOA land. Right now, the use table, that type of use is not explicitly called out, and the use table is on pages eight and nine of the packet. This is table A. So we'll probably be commenting on that to get a little bit more clarity on if this intent is still in the code to treat utility poles on private land similarly to utility poles on a public right-of-way. Second, we'll probably be talking about the separation standard on page 13, 21A 56-101, a separation standard of 350 feet. We're going to likely suggest that the separation standard be only for a single carrier's owned small wireless facility. This is because this could be discriminatory against carriers that come in later. And, for example, if one carrier would reply the minutes as soon as they can, and pick poles in the critical service area, such as in commercial areas or near high-density areas, then carriers coming in after that would be de facto excluded from that area, and they wouldn't be able to provide coverage or capacity upgrades. And that could be seen as discriminatory against the carrier who's coming in later. Third, the, we're probably going to be suggesting some clarifications with the design standards, specifically what kinds of designs qualify as concealed or camouflaged. I'll have more detail for that later. But we are going to recommend that the city adopts specific, technically feasible and non-discriminatory standards to ensure consistency in the design of the small wireless facilities and lead to predictability for what the designs will end up looking like. And finally, we're going to suggest a few changes for what qualifies as a minor deviation. Right now, it's not exactly clear what a minor deviation would be envisioned in the code. This is page 14 in the review process, and it's, we might suggest something that's a threshold for that level of, that kind of thing. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I anticipate being in touch later. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gregory. Is there any, is there anybody else? Is that?
Unmuted. Uh, looks like that is, that was our only caller.
Okay. Thanks for the comments. So is there anything new?
Muted.
Kelly, do we want to review the calendar briefly, or is there anything else we need to review this evening?
Unmuted. Hi, this is Kelly Hildy, Deputy Director of Community Development. I would just like to remind the planning commission, we do have a joint meeting next Tuesday with the city council. It does start at 5:00 PM, so it is earlier. And we have a pretty large agenda. We have four topics that we'll be discussing. So this is your official heads-up on that. And we look forward to seeing you all again on Tuesday.
Thanks, Kelly. Just for commissioners, I do have that meeting link that I will be sending out to you guys tomorrow.
Great, thanks.
Muted.
Okay, could someone move to adjourn? So moved. Second? Okay, so my movement, secondly, we adjourn this evening's planning commission meeting. All those in favor, say aye, and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Closed? No? Great. I would bang the gale right here and say we're adjourned. I'll just say we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good to see everybody again.
Thanks.
Thank you.